Hello.
Mic check?
Check one, check one. Hello.
Help if I turn the speakers on. All right.
And you want to say hi to the people?
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, my work, Cat.
Hello. Well, hello, everyone. This is Scottsville Town Administrator Matt Lawless here at Victory Hall for the Scottsville Planning Commission meeting on February 1st, 2021. The meeting starts at 7:00 PM, which is in 12 minutes from now. So if you're tuning in here in the future, you can skip ahead on this video 12 minutes, and we'll convene once we get to our starting time and have our quorum. The meeting is convened in a hybrid format, both in-person and online. That's in keeping with Scottsville's continuity of government ordinance during the local emergency. So we hold the meeting in the dual format. Folks can come in both into the building and tune in online. And we store the videos on YouTube to access later, and then publish all of the minutes as normal. So thank you very much for tuning in, and I will see you shortly.
Matt, are we doing the different format today with the lobby? Do I need to be letting people in, as we discussed?
Yes, that setting is on, so keep an eye out for that.
I don't see any new buttons at the bottom of my screen. Is that a permission that I have?
Let me see. All right, so do you have a security tab?
No.
All right. Make you a co-host.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay, yes.
So the security tab, let's enable the waiting room. Did that. So we should get a pop-up when somebody goes in there.
Okay.
On that security button, you've got remove, suspend, and block. I'm not sure what block meeting does. Maybe that means nobody else comes in?
That'd be my guess.
Yeah. Okay, so yeah, we can both keep an eye on those if you need to.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Matt.
Yes.
Matt, I think that one was on us. Hi, everybody. We didn't mean to kick you all out.
Shannon, what birthday festivities do you have in store for today?
Grant, my three-year-old's birthday.
Oh, happy birthday.
Thanks. Yep, we just did cake. So, and now Luke has the brunt of putting all the Lego pieces together that he got.
All right, well, it is 7:03. I'm going to go ahead and officially start our meeting. We have a roll call for quorum.
Absolutely. Get my agenda out and do this in proper order. Let's see. Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Caltabiana?
Here.
Mr. Peck?
Here.
Ms. Lambert, are you with us yet? Okay, Ms. Strasner, you're here?
Here.
Okay. Sherry did email me that she was trying to get in and having the same trouble, so I think we'll see her shortly. But you do have a quorum?
All righty. Does everybody have, has everyone had an opportunity to look at the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda, or are there amendments that you thought?
I make the motion to approve the agenda. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move on to number two, which is review and approval of meeting minutes for January 4th, 2020. Oh, that's a, yep, that's a mistake.
2020. It's dated correctly on the minutes, so.
All right, has everybody had a chance to review them? If not, you can take a minute. Do I have a motion to approve or not?
I'll make the motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 4th. A second.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed. Meeting's approved. Minutes approved, sorry. Let's, can we have a report on what town council's been doing? Anything relevant for us?
The only thing relevant for the planning commission here is that we will call a public hearing for the special use permit at 430 Valley Street on February 16th, Tuesday, February 16th.
Was that for the was that for the seamstress shop? Yes.
Okay. If there's nothing else from town council, we'll move on to number four. Matters from the public. If anyone out there in TV land would like to speak to us, just it's not a hand-raising motion, so I guess.
We have nobody in TV land at the moment.
Okay, well, we have Mr. Smith, if he'd like to say anything.
Nothing special. I just appreciate all your space across the street.
You kind of cut out there, but.
Oh, okay. I said, I appreciate everything all you do, because having been on the planning commission for about 10 or 12 years, however long it was, I know it's not a simple task. And just know that I appreciate everything that y'all are doing.
Thank you. All right, if no one else would like to speak, we will close matters on the public, and we'll move down to our public hearing. This is at 691 Harrison Street. Stephen Passapulo, hello? I apologize if I said your name wrong. And this is for tourist lodging. Would you like to set it up a little bit, or we have a vote?
Yes, sir, thank you. County Administrator Matt Lawless speaking. The application from Stephen Passapulo at 691 Harrison Street is for a special use permit for tourist lodgings. The property is a duplex home. The owner does not live on-site, but runs it as an investment property. It has two units in it. The application is to convert one of those to the tourist lodging's use. The town has a fairly simple framework for regulating tourist lodgings, Airbnb being the most common way of booking those. We license them on businesses and collect transient occupancy taxes, and then have the special use permit process to consider things like parking availability or any other neighborhood nuisances that might not make the use appropriate at every site. I haven't received any public comment in advance of this hearing. The owner provided a basic narrative about their experience as property managers and the suitability of this building for the use. But the staff report is favorable. The creating more of this kind of use is important to the local economy, as the two larger traditional bed and breakfasts in town have closed, and it's a long way to the nearest traditional hotel. So the lodgings are certainly valuable at this point.
Planning commissioners, do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
Nope.
All right, well, I will give you guys the floor. Do we have a motion?
I make the motion to approve the special use permit at 691 Harrison Street for tourist lodgings.
A second.
You'll need a roll call, right, Mr.?
I will, and we might want to, Sherry is just logging in here to join us. Hi, Sherry.
Hi, was that an initiation right?
No. Our technical difficulties spiraled there for a little bit. Matt, would you mind maybe one more time here, since we haven't yet called the roll on this vote? Just describing the application for Sherry as well, so I could include her on this.
Oh, certainly, yes. Sorry for the delay. Good to see you here. As I think you heard last month, by way of introduction, this property is a little north of your home. It's 691 Harrison Street. One of the duplexes towards the north end of Harrison Street. The property owners, Stephen Passapulo is the they have two apartments in that building and propose to convert one of them from year-round residential to tourist lodging and Airbnb-type of booking. In the town zoning, the tourist lodgings requires a special use permit. We give that a little bit closer examination to consider things like parking availability and other kinds of nuisance concerns that might not make this use perfect in every location. The town has approved several of these reasons, and the tourist lodging's use has become more common. But that doesn't create a strong precedent either way. It's definitely a case-by-case evaluation. The owners are experienced property managers and propose to keep one of the units as a continuing residence while renting out the other. The town comprehensive plan supports the expansion of these kinds of uses to provide adequate lodgings for the local economy. That's especially important because the two larger bed and breakfasts that we used to have in town are no longer in that business, and there's no chain hotel south of the edge of Charlottesville. So the staff recommendation is favorable. The motion to approve the SUP was made in seconded just before you joined the meeting.
And I'm sorry, I got distracted by Sherry joining. Who had the second there? Thank you, Shannon.
And I should say that I'm going to be recusing myself because of my personal connection to the property.
Thank you. I'll note that as well.
Before you vote, are there any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. Can we have a voice vote, please?
Absolutely. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert? I'm sorry, Ms. Lambert, I didn't get that. Okay, sorry. I had my agenda up in front of me. Ms. Strasner?
Yes.
Thank you. And the motion passes.
I made a mistake. I apologize. I did not actually close the public hearing. So we'll close the public hearing as that is happening. So we will now move down to 7A, a special use permit at 501 Valley Street, Heinz Gadian, Ground Floor Residential. Matt, can you give us some information?
Thank you very much. This is a new application for an existing use. In past years, the town would occasionally approve special use permits with a time limit that they be reexamined every so often. The town did something similar with the Tiger Fuel special use permit recently, considering nuisance impacts after a delay of two years. But back oh, 15 or 20 years ago, the town approved this special use permit with the condition that it be reexamined every five years. And then unfortunately, the town lost track of that. So a full five-year cycle and almost a second five-year cycle went by with no consideration of this property.
Matt, if I, sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to clarify one thing about the Tiger Fuel. That was not, the entire SUP was not contingent on that revisiting. That was just hours of operation and those sort of nuisance-associated things, but they had specifically said that they would not do it if the entire SUP was time-constrained in this way that we have done in the past with the one that's before us now.
So this one is stronger because it was a condition on the entire use. The property in question here is number 501 Valley Street, which is the small building between the Beto Restaurant and Bain's Coffee Shop. It's a, it's a small, one-story cottage-type structure with a colorful facade, a couple of lounge chairs sit out in front of it, and it has an awning that sticks out halfway over the sidewalk. Is everyone familiar with that building that we're talking about? So it has a single apartment in it. Heinz Gadian is the owner, and the tenant has been there for some time. The building, I think originally had an office of some kind, and it is zoned commercial, so.
When I, sorry, I was just a little history. When I first moved to town, it was a soft-serve ice cream, and then turned into a laundromat, sort of not on-site, but they would carry it off-site somewhere.
I think that was simultaneous. I think.
Right, and then they overlapped for a little bit. I think the laundromat use inherited some of the soft-serve place's equipment, and so they figured they'd make a few extra. And so they figured they'd make a few extra bucks on the side doing that as well. It was strictly soft serve when I first moved in.
So it was in 2015 that Planning Commission recommended the approval of the residential use. And allowed the apartment there. So if you've been in town longer than six years, you'll you'll remember that that business used there before. The S U P was approved with the condition that it be reviewed every five years. So we spotted that special use permit in our records last year and notified the owner that they were due for that review. And needed the renewal of the permit to continue the use. So they they duly applied. But they did so with the request that we remove the five year renewal provision. They claim no related nuisance and that this is a good use of the property and that their condition should be their use should be permanent without the five year review.
It's worth mentioning that our town attorney has also advised us that it's a bit in dispute, but he feels like it's probably worth saying that the the term limits on an S U P like that can only be done by a Board of Zoning Appeals and not during the initial permit review by a Planning Commissioner or Town Council.
This is a. It is a litigated part of land use law. Whether which bodies have the power to do these kind of temporary time limited permits? Some places do it routinely and they want to reexamine these rights every few years. Other places say that you you can't do that. No one would make an investment if they could lose the property that's in five years. So there there have been suits about it, but it hasn't been firmly decided at the State Supreme Court.
I mean, personally, I don't see why we would need to revisit this every five years, especially if especially if the unit is in use. I I'm wondering, though, in the situation that the unit became vacant and then sat vacant for a specific period of time, and let's call it, you know, years as opposed to months. Is that something that we could potentially have a say in or? I don't really know where I'm going with this question. Had a very long day.
It's a hot topic. Nobody, nobody wants to see a lot of properties vacant and going into neglect. So we we look for all the tools that we can to try to motivate those. And I guess what I point out on this one is that the special use permit adds the residential, but doesn't take away the commercial. If if the housing market changed and nobody wanted this kind of apartment, the owner would still have the option to go back to office or retail.
And that's what I was going to say. I think that this was done originally at a time, like you said, Lindsay, where he was, you know, having trouble filling the space. As we've seen with other, you know, commercial spaces on that main drag. And so he decided to make the request to do this conversion. Like Matt said, it added the new use without taking away the old. So if the market put a higher value on that going back to a commercial space for him, presumably, you'd see the owner revert it to the original use. But, you know, as a planning commission, you take these applications individually, and it's fair for you to to take each one and consider the balance overall of commercial and residential spaces. You know, within the town or within that district. So. Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Comprehensive plan is not especially helpful here. It describes a fine grained mix of uses along this Valley Street corridor. So the there's of residential, retail, and office, and it it's sort of on us, it is on us on a case by case basis to look at how these properties fit together.
And if the unit, if we take away that five year stipulation, does that mean it could always in the future make its own decision? The owner can make its own decision about residential or commercial? Or does it revert back to commercial after it's been vacant?
I suppose this is a reapplication, and so before you is the opportunity to approve or deny the application. Because we are still working on that five year renewal as far as everyone, you know, involved here is concerned. If you approve the application as it's been submitted, it would be to extend that new property right in perpetuity. On, you know, even if the owner decided to use it as a commercial space for some amount of time, they would retain the right to convert it back to a residential use in the future. Does that answer the question, Lisa? Okay.
Do Planning Commissioners feel they have enough information to move forward? My recommendation would most likely be to approve a five year term as it would just be the renewing. And then treating a more permanent solution as a separate case kind of sounds like that's a there's ambiguity between being our responsibility and Board of Zoning Appeals?
There's there's no dispute about whether whether you can grant it as a permanent provision. There is some dispute and it changes across the state about how to use these five year windows. If you don't want to do the five year window, you we're absolutely sure you have that power.
Okay.
So I have a question to remind me, how did we decide on the the similar situation that we had across the street? We didn't give them a five year stipulation, did we?
No, we did not. We had that same advice at that point from our town attorney that we we should probably steer away from those types of time constraints on these S U Ps. If if a neighboring property wanted to raise a complaint with the Board of Zoning Appeals about the S U P that we just passed, for example, the Board of Zoning Appeals could evaluate the work that you guys did on the permit and say, okay, we'll allow the permit as well, but we're going to put this time constraint on it so that we can see, you know, in five years if this is working or not. But as Matt said, that's been litigated, whether or not that's a power that only the Board of Zoning Appeals has, or whether that's something that Town Council or Planning Commission can do as well. And it has not been established by the the Supreme Court of Virginia. So in this case, what our town attorney is recommending is to steer clear of potential litigation, not necessarily that something is definitively prohibited.
And I certainly don't want to criticize the 2015 decision of Commission and Council. They 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 weren't certain how this was going to play out over time. And they they wanted to preserve their options, and that's certainly.
Well, I mean, personally, I I don't see any reason to hold them to some sort of five year renewal. Just due to the fact that it's it's been residential, at least for the past five years. And if the unit is rented, you know, and we have recently approved similar special use permits. Then, you know, we should go ahead in good faith and just allow this special use permit to exist in perpetuity. Since it's already been the case and there hasn't, from what I understand, or at least what we know, there haven't been any issues. So, and I think we're all in agreement that a filled space on Valley Street is better than an empty space.
For that application, are we able to just remove the line of five year or do we need a new application?
The applicant's request in reapplying is to remove the time constraint.
And let me just welcome Alex in. Sorry, Shannon. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I was going to ask if we vote to renew it, does that also mean we're voting to remove the five year contingent? Okay.
Yeah, he's applied without it, so he's asking for us to just carry this forward indefinitely.
Great.
Sherry, just a quick introduction. Alex, who's just joined us, was the the a graduate student at U V A who worked with the town over the summer for one of his courses on some planning work. And you'll see him in meetings from time to time here.
Hey, Town of Scottsville. Good to see you guys. Hey, Tom, your mustache looks fantastic. So.
Thank you very much. Keep it all under the mask these days.
It's great. Good to see you guys.
All right. Well, with all that, do we have a motion? And this will be for calling a public hearing on the renewal of the application for 501 Valley Street.
March 1st is when that meeting will.
And the next meeting would be March 1st.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we have a hearing on a special use permit for 501 Valley Street.
Second?
A second.
And then do you need a roll call or do you need a?
Oh, a voice vote's fine on that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? The motion will pass. All right. March 1st. We're going to move to seven B, which is zoning text amendments for sections of intent definitions and village residential. Do you all have, did we send this out via email? Okay. If you happen to have this, hopefully we've had a chance to read it over. Matt, I'm going to let you set up before we jump in.
Thank you very much. And I can certainly screen share some text as we as we get into this. I I really appreciate everybody's time digging into the ordinance text and your enthusiasm with taking on zoning updates with gusto here in the new year. It's it's very encouraging as as Town Council approved the West Downtown Small Area Plan in December. They highlighted the goals of updating our zoning ordinance as a top priority for implementation and a way that we can help move the ball forward with this vision and modernize the town's laws. It helps us move this plan forward and bring it to reality at pretty low cost upfront compared to some of the other action items. So it's it's encouraging to have it as a priority. The the town's zoning ordinance. This text dates to 1996 and has never had a real serious update. The town has done spot amendments at different times related to topics like when microbrew regulations came in or as transient lodgings like Airbnb became. Most recently in 2019, the town updated downtown residential, the the Harrison Street, Hay Street kind of historic downtown zoning. We had excellent interim work that studied the conformity of that zoning. We found that our existing ordinance didn't match what was there, and so we were able to modernize that and better describe what we really had. That problem arose because this ordinance document by and large dates to 1996 when the town pretty much copied the Admiral County zoning that was in place in the edges of town at that time. The town expanded its boundaries, took in a larger area and didn't want to disturb the zoning that was in place for the new residents. So by adopting the Admiral County zoning that was in place, it held the new residents harmless as far as their property rights. So we're we're mostly working with Admiral County's 1996 zoning ordinance and haven't taken on big updates since then. So there there are a few easy modernizing actions, and I'm proposing a couple of those here tonight. And then others that more directly advance the the town comprehensive plan and the West Downtown Small Area Plan. So if I if I may, let me share the little presentation here that walks through these so you can see the the text. So we're talking about our definition sections. The overall authority and purpose, and then the village residential section. Planning Commission at last month's meeting discussed taking on some of the simpler ones first. Topics like night sky lighting regulations can get pretty complicated. And have many pages of new texts to come up with. So I think these are are fairly straightforward ones with simpler decisions to make about whether this is a direction that you want to go in. So we, as I said, we have the alignment in our comprehensive plan and the downtown small area plan that calls for these changes. So if if this briefing is helpful, these zoning text amendments can move to public hearing at your convenience. The zoning ordinance frames the the basics of property rights and defines how properties can be used in different parts of town. It's one of your two key tools for land use. So you have the text of the ordinance that defines rules for different districts. And then a map that applies those rules to different parcels. So none of what we're looking at here this evening changes the map status of any property. If you have a commercial property, it stays commercial. If you have an industrial property, it stays industrial. Instead, we're looking at the the rules underlying and the permission that goes with each kind of zone. The town's comprehensive plan calls for these kinds of updates as a way of advancing our strategies. And in particular, creating new opportunities with our zoning ordinance to help achieve the the kinds of goals and redevelopment that we want to see. So, for example, in our comp plan, we target the village residential district zoning to be updated to better encourage the kind of traditional village character that we actually want to see. Acknowledging that the zoning text as it is now hasn't supported a lot of new investment in the of the type that we would like to see. So with, see, the the Paultown Cluster was built in the 40s through 60s. Provides an excellent example of a compact village cluster, but that was done before the town had any zoning in place. It if we want to use that as a model.
Before that was part of the town.
So if you want to use that as a model, it would be worth a hard look at, you know, does the does the existing text actually support that? How easily could we replicate the things that we have and like in town with the zoning that we've got? Small area plan calls for the same thing. Using updated zoning as a tool to support the kind of mixed use and mixed income development that we want to see on the 60 acre site. Preserve open space, renovate buildings, have something that's walkable and easy to navigate without traffic nuisances. So getting the zoning ordinance in place lets us do that. And it happens in a context of significant demand. Last month, I think it was Ms. Calabiano asked, how much serious inquiry do we have on these sites now? And I I can't give much in the way of specific details on it yet. Developers are entitled to a certain confidentiality, but there there is demand. And Realtors from local Kevin Quick is is often asking about And Realtors from local Kevin Quick is often asking about small parcels in town and what kinds of infill construction can be done. And we also have significant interest in the tire factory properties and what kind of creative development can happen there. So I think the most I can disclose now is that these recommendations would be well-received by all of the interested investors that I've heard from so far.
And I would go a step further and say, beyond whatever specifics may or may not be in the works, the small area plan passing seems to have done what it was intended to do and bring the attention to the fact that there is a plan in place and a willingness to work on it. So yeah, I think making hay while the sun shines, as it were, is gonna be important here.
Yeah, it was notable that Planning Commission and Town Council spoke so clearly in the small area plan. Here's what we want to see, and if an investor wants to build that thing, that we're going to try to be a good partner. So with that in mind, the first of these updates is simply to the intent section of our zoning. The very first chapter lays out what the purpose of the ordinance is, and it gives a bullet point list of goals to be achieved. And those bullet points simply copy state law. In 2006, the state legislature acknowledged creation and preservation of affordable housing as one of the responsibilities of local government. So it says in state code, a local zoning ordinance must accomplish and plan for these things. And our zoning ordinance doesn't say that. So adding this text, which quotes state code, gives us the purpose and intent of looking at a responsible housing market that we can't wash our hands of that entirely and not pay attention to the amount, character, and quality of housing that we. The other simple update in Section 1 is the purpose and compatibility with the comprehensive plan. The zoning ordinance simply quotes the comprehensive plan's vision statement, and that changed between the 2012 and 2018 comprehensive plan documents. The new vision statement is a little more compact and doesn't speak to the morals and manners of the citizens. It's a little more focused on small-town character, scenery, nature, history, thoughtful development. Those phrases stay, but words about order and morals of the public go away. Any questions on those two matters in Section 1? Okay. Over in definitions, Chapter 3 of this ordinance is one of the longer ones as it defines many of the basic terms that appear elsewhere in the ordinance. So a few of those are also due for basic cleanups. One of them is the definition of a family and how many people can live in a home before it's considered overcrowded. This is a hot topic in Charlottesville where student housing, students moving into houses, you have a large number of unrelated people living in the same house. So you start to have crowding concerns and how that can be done. So Scottsville's definition is up to six people not related by marriage, adoption, or guardianship living together in a district other than downtown residential. That's the change. There's no change to the number or type and operation. This is just a name change. In 2019, the town updated the R3 type and renamed it downtown residential. So it helps to show this is one of the regulations that we look at and how zoning can have a pretty big impact on the type of residence that you get in there. Without this definition limiting what a family is, you can have a frat house of unlimited size. Just a name cleanup here, we're not proposing any change to the regulation.
But should there be a comma there between the words blood and marriage?
Yes, there should.
That might be an important comma.
I'm actually interested in what a blood marriage is.
I was gonna say, this gets real games of throne real quick.
I was gonna, yeah.
Very much. I'm wondering if that is, if that's a typo on my part? No, that's a typo in the original.
How do we change state code, though?
Whatever a blood marriage is, we've been regulating them for 30 years. Why we do this? Good eye.
It's the little things sometimes.
Yeah, a comma could change things a lot.
I'd love to see someone litigate that.
The next one, thinking a step ahead so we don't have to come back to the definition section, is the accessory dwelling unit. These are a feature that is significant in Scottsville's history but wasn't called this and is an important new trend in zoning regulations to provide a little bit more infill and affordability opportunity. A lot of places where this kind of structure used to be illegal, now finding ways to legalize them. Scottsville's case, we have the precedent of accessory dwellings going back to colonial and antebellum eras, but never discussed them in our zoning. So we have them all as non-conforming structures and uses, but you wouldn't be allowed to build a new one under the zoning that we have. So those are the issues in taking on a zoning update like this. The accessory dwelling unit is a detached or attached residential dwelling on a site that also has a single family, and it provides complete accommodations for one or more person living there. A small kitchen, a small sleeping place. In Scottsville, we have cottages, old west houses or slave quarters. Newer versions often take this look and put a small apartment above a garage. So if you're interested, this would create an opportunity for future regulations going into more detail about where the accessory dwellings can go or to what standard they need to be built. We don't have those yet, but by adding the, we've got the topic ready. Does that make sense?
Yes, I think it's definitely worth visiting that in the future, yes. I think I also have a question on that, if you could backtrack a second. So it's specifying on the same parcel as a single-family dwelling unit. So do we actually mean it has, it's actually only attached to a single-family dwelling unit? Or might there be a case where it's attached to a duplex?
Good point. Yes, the intent as written is that it be allowable in, even in this, there aren't any duplexes, and that it's only an accessory if it's attached to a single family. It's not meant to create more density than that. But if you wanted to put these on a lot that already had a duplex or more on it, then I think you would just strike the word "single family" and replace it with "primary." The intent is that you attach it, you don't just build this by itself on a lot. It's not a tiny house regulation, but it's meant to be accessory to another house.
So would you suggest then that we also make that change? Because the only thing that comes to mind off the top of my head is the white Victorian across the street from the brewery. Doesn't it have, I don't know if it's a garage or if there's some sort of living space in the building?
That little outbuilding behind it, you mean? Yeah. There are a couple of other little ones around in the historic area. I know of a couple of houses on Harrison Street, the larger lots have outbuildings, some of which have historical or more recent residential uses. I think the big, I think the old Doctor's House, the big one on Main Street, that garage, I think, has finished space above it. Yeah, like Matt said, there's a sort of existing history of it around in the area and some structures that have already been built, but as he said, they're sort of non-conforming contributing structures at this point.
The Stinson House is multi-family now. And yeah, so if you wanted to treat the accessory, call that carriage house an accessory, that would, this.
Right, the Stinson House, if they wanted to fix that up and include it as another unit, they're already doing a multi-unit, you know, dwelling there. And that wouldn't be reliant on any kind of change to this definition. But, you know, Claire and Shadows turning the old slave quarter house behind her house into an actual, you know, residential unit, that sort of thing would require this.
Are you interested in striking "single family" there, though?
So. Well, I think that we need to have a definition that is more encompassing. So either you, either we can strike "single family" or we could create another definition for something that might be a tiny house, for example, because that's, you know, the way that things are going, people looking to build those things. So it might make sense just to strike that here so that this definition could encompass more.
We could put a pin in it for now, because I think when Matt gets into the larger VR text, we'll get into some of exactly what you're talking about, different ways of, I don't know if it would go as far as tiny houses, but different ways of clustering and doing access and things that look like cottage clusters and not necessarily like houses on individual lots. So we could put a pin in this for now and see what comes out of the VR discussion. And if the VR discussion doesn't get where you're thinking it needs to be, then maybe we come back and we look at this as an individual thing there.
Yeah. I don't think this runs afoul of tiny house, though. The, I've seen a few different proposals for those, and the, what often hurts them is building code. The county buildings up there have certain requirements for a structure to be safe around how big it needs to be, how much space goes into a bathroom, for example. And it's, so it's not the town's zoning that is sometimes hurting the tiny house idea, but rather the state law. But we don't, so we don't have a restriction on zoning about how small a house needs to be. Put your, pull on. See if these match. The other set of definitions that again go up into VR and some of our other districts are the triplex and quadruplex definitions. We list quadruplex and quadruplex in several of our zoning districts as allowable uses, but they just don't have definitions in them. There's nothing that lets you judge, is this thing that you're proposing to build actually a triplex and quadruplex the way that we want it to be? So I made those definitions and I proposed to add them here using basically a different definition than you have for a duplex. But importantly, and distinguishing from townhouse. So what's the difference between a townhouse row and a triplex or quadruplex? And the, the way I understand that that's important is how the front doors are arranged. In a townhouse row, whether it's a row of three or four, that really counts. What makes it a townhouse is that the front doors are all, all of the front doors face the street. So the other way of being a single big building that I sort of keep living in is the front doors don't all face the same way. So you might have something that looks like a large house, and two front doors are on the front and two front doors are on the side to the back. So that's a quadruplex, not a townhouse. So that's what this definition tells, that it's three or four families living in the structure, but only, not more than two of the primary agencies are on the same thing face. So we might have a district that says, yes, triplex and quadruplex, but no to townhouses. And if somebody wants to build a structure that has four families in it, my guidance would be put two of the front doors on the front and have the other two front doors on the back, and that'll make it less imposing and won't be a townhouse, but rather a quadruplex. Does that seem helpful?
That's really interesting to me, because I never thought of it in that way. I think of it as a town, a town home or row of are separately deeded, whereas a quadruplex or a triplex are a single deed. So I think of it less as, I think of it more as far as ownership, whereas this is more of like an aesthetics, which makes sense, because that's what planning is looking at also.
Yeah, and there can be a few different ownership structures, whether it's different parcels or condominium divisions or investor ownership of the whole thing. But that raises a really good point about how the zoning affects the investment type and the ownership structure which, yeah, and the village residential draft has an important point on that topic. So I appreciate you coming to that. I think it's the kind of visual that I think is matching what we got in our community surveys. There was a lot of feedback, especially in the small area plan, that the big rows of massive townhouses with lots of front doors all in a row, that that's not appropriate, it's unpopular. But smaller, multi-family designs like these other two, we have historic examples of these nearby, and those go over a lot better. And there's, it's not a big difference as far as overall density or construction cost, but it's one of the ways that we can put aesthetics into our zoning and dictate the form that we get. This right-hand townhouse row concept is pretty common in today's housing market, but it does not seem at all popular in discussions about how Scottsville goes in the future. So if we can use our zoning to dive towards the triplex and quadruplex forms, you get the benefits of density and lower construction cost without the same cookie-cutter townhouse facades that are being built for the market now. Does that make sense as a goal? So how do we do this in village residential? Understanding that this is where a lot of the open ground for construction is, and it's the category that gives us the most opportunity for new development. Because when the town made the update to the downtown residential category, we said pretty clearly, that's gonna be a conformity update for the historic district, and there's no intent to rezone a bunch of land downtown residential. We accept our core downtown, stay the size that it is. So that means that the village residential category is most likely the category to be used for new, compact, smart development. And unfortunately, it has never been used that well. It has these stated goals that are listed on the screen, and we just haven't seen that activity happen. The intent is there, but the numbers on it and the list of uses have not worked for any size of a new construction. Like, as I said, Polletown was the last and largest clustered development in town, and that was before either Scottsville or Admaral County had any ordinance at all. It was built in the. It was built in the, the pre-market, no zoning framework. But I think it sets a good baseline for what looks good and what now feels right in a community. And it provides a good mix of affordability, open space and lack of quality. So what's not working in the ordinance as we have now? As I, as I talked with builders and walked them through, and here's what we have, over the past three years, this is the kind of feedback that I've got. The ordinance has a clustered development section, but it doesn't actually provide any density blocks. It lets you rearrange your lots, but not any increase to the density. And that underlying density of 0.7 meters per acre is simply too low to be profitable. If you're building new streets, laying new water lines, doing all the infrastructure that goes with new development. If the housing market that we have, where we expect houses to be closer to a quarter million, a half a million in our market, it's not, it's not there. So when, when builders run the numbers, whether it's 40 houses or 50 houses, they don't see the fall of the project. And that's been the case for the past 30 years, and we haven't gotten one of the qualifications. There's also a contradiction in the lot size and height. They, the, the ordinance, as it stands now, does state that duplexes and townhouses are allowed, but the minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet. You can't, you can't build duplexes or townhouses on that clipper. For a 20-foot lot, 20-foot wide triplex, you'd have a 20-foot by, 25-foot by 300-foot lot. 7,500 feet doesn't match the, the type of usage that you want to see.
But that's the minimum lot size, so doesn't it stand to reason that if you're putting three units, you'd want to get a larger lot size? And they have the freedom to do that?
I think this would be if you wanted to deed them individually. To your point about, you know, is a, a quadplex just a, a single deed with four families sharing it? Or is it a single building with four deeded properties in it? This is saying, if you want to build the triplex that is three deeded properties, you, you cannot currently, because the minimum lot size for each of those deeded properties would have to be 7,500 square feet. And so your middle townhome with no access to an end lot that it could incorporate would wind up having to have a lot as wide as it is, 25 feet and 300 feet long.
Exactly. So the, so that's a good example of where the, how the zoning affects ownership. That what we often see built now are duplexes or townhouses where the lots are quite small. Say 20 by 100 feet. And then someone buys that and chooses a home, but have a very small yard, and that's an okay choice for them to make. What we have now, we're not allowed that, and you can build a quadruplex, but you might have to have a quadruplex on a couple of acres, and then it could be subordinated. So you create a landlord and rental option, but not a homeownership. Both of those are fine, but if you, if you want them to be a homeownership model, then the lot price has to be small.
And this is also related directly there to number three about the, the density per acre. Yeah, that the clustering does not in, improve that density at all. So even if you have a larger lot, as you were saying, Lisa, there's no benefit of being able to say, you know, and we reserve this space is undeveloped so that we can reach a more a, a, a smaller minimum lot size.
You're, you're saving a little bit of money on infrastructure, because you don't have to build as long of a street. You cluster the buildings over here and have the space, but you don't get any overall density limits for making that. So my recommendation in order to resolve this issue is being clear on bylaw duplex, triplex and quadruplex, allowing them to be built on the same lot, but cutting out townhouses, atrium houses and patio homes. I'm not very clear on what atrium houses and patio homes are supposed to be. They're not defined in our ordinance either, and I don't think we have any of them found. So setting that aside, the townhouse part is what we, we're clear in our community feedback that we don't want to see be the dominant feature of new development. So if we can do it on clusters with small single-family duplex, triplex and quad, that provides a fair amount of opportunity for builders to do what's affordable without duplicating the, the massive townhouse structure, which gets such negative feedback. On the duplex and triplex section, striking provided the density is maintained lets you, lets you double that up and have the, the duplex on a smaller lot. Instead of saying, you know, if each house has to have an acre, you have a duplex that has to be on two acres. You haven't actually put things any closer together, you've just moved them all to the edge of the lot. So it's like that, and then you can do duplexes on each lot of the size and actually get the density bonus. The, the key change is in this table at the last page of that ordinance. And these are the, these are the key numbers for what kind of, what kind of character of development do you want to see? So the only proposed changes are in the plus direction. The conventional development stays absolutely the same. And the yards and setbacks stay the same. Buildings don't get closer to the street or further apart from each other. In the downtown residential zoning, these numbers are smaller as the houses come closer to the street and closer to each other. That's, you get a certain aspect of density that way and how the house sits on the lot. And by, by keeping that the same, we minimize the, the disruption that it poses. The biggest change, of course, is the density bonus. Going from not having a bonus to having a bonus and taking the minimum lot size way down to accommodate a cluster or duplex or quadruplex grouping that could have subdivision and homeownership rights. So you could put a, a quadplex on a 10,000 square foot lot, give each quadrant of it a little yard and then sell it off. This is the model that, for example, Habitat for Humanity has used very successfully with its small duplex communities. By using a small lot size on a duplex and then selling them off, they provide homeownership with the minimum of lot size and keep the total property value a little bit lower. In trade-off for the increased density at this point, we propose a higher open space threshold. Take that from 25% up to 32%. So if someone's working with with a 10-acre cluster, three acres of that would have to be set aside as, as part preserved floodplain forest. And then all of their development rights can bunch up in another corner of it. That's what we've got. Happy to go over in more detail on how this would work. But I think it, I think it meets the, the planning intent that we've got so far and provides some new opportunity. But importantly, it doesn't make any change to the zoning path. As, as I said at the beginning, if you, if you already have commercial property, it doesn't change your rights. You already have industrial property, it doesn't change your rights. It only changes what you can build if you already own a parcel of village residential.
Sorry, say that again. It only changes what you can build if what?
If you already own a property zoned village residential.
The, the map amendment process is a separate application, and the cluster development process is also a separate application. The ordinance already says that cluster construction is by special use. So if somebody wants to do even five homes in a small cluster, if they're going to vary from this 40,000 square foot or 60,000 square foot minimum lot size, same requirement that's definitely used on it and show the points.
And I would just prefer a little bit of context on that gross density number of four per acre. I remember as we were doing the historic downtown revision, I believe at a 50-foot lot size, 50-foot frontage, eight to 10 was the density in your sort of standard walkable residential neighborhood. The example that we were given was the original workforce housing in older parts of Belmont. That sort of layout is typically an, an eight to 10 unit per acre gross density.
And that's the, that's the growth density that we found in downtown Scottsdale when we did the downtown residential update. So the, the current zoning that we've got there is perfect. And that's the, that's the Harrison Street neighborhood. So a village, a village cluster, which worked at half of that overall density and preserved a third of its area of open space, I think would meet the common sense definition of village rather than townhouse.
And Matt, could you actually pull up the map? That might just be useful for us to see and share.
Does that mean?
Yeah, just to Lisa's question about whose rights are affected by these changes. Might just be useful if you can see all the yellow there. It's mostly, there's a little bit of it that sort of snakes into the western edge of town, but it's largely, it's all the yellow on the map there that Matt has. Largely the upper portion of town.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
Yep. So the other categories that we've got are, the orange is the downtown residential, eight minutes per acre. Townhouses allowed. And the other lowest density is this rural area, and that's two acres. Minimum, the highest level of environmental preservation and the lowest density. So the village residential has to be somewhere in between 0.5 and eight.
And this is coming all the way down to the, the sort of north end of Bird Street at its furthest south point. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I said further south, but then no, the Fluvana side. You're right, Matt. You had that over there.
Lisa, were you speaking? You missed that.
You're on mute.
Sorry, I pressed the button and I thought it was the right button. It was the wrong button. Can you scroll up to the top, please, again? I'm sorry. How far, th- th- this is the town, these are the town limits?
Yes.
Is that's Poplar Spring Road up there? Oh, Pet Dennis. Okay.
The, the last big map amendment that the town did was this 58 proportion.
Yeah.
And that's for Paulette Town.
Yeah.
So this is the largest single VR parcel now.
And what were they trying to put on that? That was like last year or the year before. What did they want to put on that land?
It's all the stuff to the right of that, actually, where these streets and all the, the platted out lots are. That's the Mint Creek Estates. That was never built, that was platted in 2008 or nine.
Wasn't that like 100 units or something like that?
Something big like that, yeah.
I think, I think Lisa's talking about the development that Dr. Hurt wanted to do around the water tower. Is that what you're talking about, Lisa?
Yeah.
Nothing, let's never mention Mint Creek. My own personal preference. But, but I think that's what she was talking about. Dr. Hurt at the time had been interested in putting townhouses in the mix at that point. Am I remembering?
And we, let me break in, let me break in for a minute. That, that was when I was on, that was when I was on council. That was when I was on council and we approved 35 single-family homes up there for Dr. Hurt with a walkable access by Van Cleve downtown. And he never did anything with it.
When, when was that?
At least six or seven years ago.
I, I think Lisa's talking to the most recent sparking of interest by Dr. Hurt of that piece of property that was literally just maybe two years ago. It was right before I came on to the planning commission. It was actually the reason why I'm not in the planning commission.
Yeah, 200, 250 acres he came before us with over that way that he wanted rezoned for a planned development. And then after we talked about it a bit, he came back and said, well, I only want to do 50, 50 homes right now. And every, you know, 50 homes every 10 years, and we're thinking, well, you'll be 175 years old by the time you finish building all this stuff. We, we didn't, didn't change any of that. I think that's still agricultural zoning, isn't it, over that way?
Yes, but you're asking about the, the 50-acre part adjacent to Paulette Town. And I'm trying to find the sketch on that, because we did have that in this, in this body in 2019. I'll keep, I'll keep looking.
So I, my question is, right now, without the information that you've just presented us, Matt, is that what we are looking to discuss and potentially make those changes and move up to a public hearing? Is that?
Yeah, roughly. And the first, you know, few things that we went through there with the revisions to the intent and definitions are, are pretty straightforward. And, you know, hopefully just a, a sort of cursory discussion. I think we might need to take another good bit of time there on the, the zoning update. Our, our discussion of historic downtown took a couple of months from start to finish there. But I think the thought was that what Matt went through tonight would sort of be the first package that we would try to move forward into one public hearing. And there's an advertising cost associated with, you know, moving these things forward every time. So if we can kind of do them in lumps rather than individually, it'll save us a little bit of administrative cost.
Yeah, I mean, personally, you know, when we're, when we're talking about the intent these definitions, those seem pretty no-brainer to me. And I, and I do agree with these changes. As we get into the village residential, it's definitely something I personally need a little more time with to populate in my brain and to have a, I think, maybe a better understanding of before making any any changes, because I, specifically with Lisa bringing up Dr. Hurt in this area. I mean, I, I think it's something that we should just tread a little carefully on before making, you know, rushing into any of those changes.
Absolutely. And, and I think, well, like I said, you know, I think this will be a few months before we get it, you know, it ready to call a public hearing. I, I, we don't need any action on any of this stuff tonight. Really just take it home and think about it, digest it for a while. Yeah.
I, I found the sketch that we got in February 2019. That was a rezoning request for all of the Virginia Land Company holdings on the northeast part of town. Their total acreage is 225 acres, and they were asking for the whole thing to be the R3 zoning that we had at the time. So three minutes per acre times 225.
Which is now our historic downtown.
Yes. So that was, it was a site plan that sketch 675 houses, a mix of single-family and townhouses. That didn't go anywhere. And then the town
Sorry.
Updated or
I'm sorry. Or from Mint Creek.
It, it was the whole land, the 50 acres of VR adjacent to Paulette Town and the stuff that he has platted out as Mint Creek. He was, he was coming back with the entire parcel there.
So that didn't go anywhere. And that, that got us into the conversation of, well, we need to, we need to update R3 so that it can't be used that way. And, and that got done successfully so that it describes what we have in our historic downtown, but is explicitly for that. So I, I think this clustering provision does a better job of Uh, so I, I think this clustering provision does a better job of, um, reducing the overall scale and using it for smaller parcels and not, um, not five hundred units at one.
And Matt, are the, are the site plans for clusters, well, the site plan, uh, are, are approved independently, but are, are the, is the cluster ordinance approved only by permit or is that, if we make these recommended changes, uh, is there another layer of review before site plan on that cluster development? Um, to Lisa's point, or, and I think, uh, Lindsay as well had said, um, something about treading carefully here. And I just wanted to, um, uh, make clear sort of all of our layers of review, because, uh, we're not, you know, giving away the farm by making these changes. Well, it's reasonable. I mean, we are giving away some of the farm. We're, we're giving away a fair amount of things that, you know, would now become, uh, entrenched as by right. But, um, there's still a fair amount of, of oversight that the, the board here would have for, uh, permitting and, and review.
Right. So, in, in the district, we list the by rights leases and the by special use permit leases. So those stay arranged the same way. You would get a, a new by rights to build one duplex on a lot that you've already. Nothing else. The special use permit part is where the cluster development is. So if we had this change and somebody wanted to do a larger cluster, they would bring us, um, a special use permit application, similar to the process that Tiger Foods Market just did. Um, not complete engineering, but enough engineering to answer all of our questions about stormwater, tree cover, chaffed, a little bit of aesthetics. We do that probably then make the decision on the special use permit. And if that's approved, then they go to their full site plan design and we check that for its engineering quality. Make sure that roads, utilities, block range are all above it. And then that gets done before any construction happens. So you still have a two layer control before any cluster construction happens, a special use permit and site plan. There's no by rights brawl.
So, planning.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, Sheri, Sheri's talking there, but I cannot hear you.
I'm working it off because I'm muting, I'm muting. Can you hear me now?
Yes, just fine. Thank you.
Several questions on this. I just want to clarify that everything that you're reading about zoning, you know, when you're talking about the clusters and, and definitions of duplex, triplex, all these different things, this has to do with existing and new construction as well, correct?
Correct. Yes.
For the entire, uh, outlining down, you know, city, right? Correct. Okay. So I'm asking, how, how does this work in conjunction with the overall goal that you read earlier, Matt, about the county saying that they want to have a view of any constructions that's happening, that it has a place for affordable housing in our construct of what we're trying to accomplish? So when people come to you like Dr. Hunt, who I don't have any reference for because I'm new to the town, um, when they come to you and they have these multiple use properties, they have so many units and et cetera, is it with the affordability in mind that we're even considering allowing them to do something like that? Rather than wanting to entertain people who are coming to the city with their finances to take properties that are already existing, maybe run down, not even in use anymore, that owners can't even be found. They're just sitting there vacant and can bring those into affordable housing to keep those buildings, you know, sound and in use. So where are we on that?
Our ordinances don't speak to affordability at all. Um, what you, what you see often in the newspaper in Charlottesville projects is a requirement by the city council that a certain number of homes in a new project be made affordable and that they be listed at a certain price or reserved for certain families making below a certain income level. So, um, the, the city would have the ordinances for a while and the county is looking to strengthen the hits. Scottsville has never had it. On the logic that our housing market is not under as much stress as this, um, all of our homes are, um, affordable by Charlottesville companies. So we're not in the business of requiring, um, affordability within the development application. Uh, we could be. That, that would be a new step. But, uh, the regulations that we've seen here don't say anything about, uh, the price of a, of a home or who moves in and lives there. Uh, we do increase affordability and lower the construction price a little bit when we, uh, when we add that that see that, uh, doing the, the duplex on a lot gets you, um, to, uh, probably less expensive housing than doing one big one. Uh, so you can expect that to be doing something good for the affordable housing supply. But we're not, um, we're not setting up the framework that, that makes a waitlist for loan competitors.
I just wondered if that's something that we have to be kind of considering because we're trying to mirror the county and the regulations that they're setting up? And if that is, are we ticking that box?
Sorry, Sheri, can you say that a little louder?
I said, uh, I was just trying to make sure that if that, if we're trying to mirror the changes that are coming in the future to what's going on in the county, um, do we have to do that? And if it is, are we ticking the box? You know, are we kind of keeping that in the back of the mind? Okay, there's a certain percentage of our population that needs affordable housing. Are we making space for that as we're making it?
I, I, I think that we've, I mean, what you've identified here is that it's, it's sort of included there in the, uh, vision language of this, you know, ordinance, but not sort of specifically enumerated in the, um, uh, legally enforceable part of the ordinance. Um, to Matt's point, uh, according to the Virginia Housing and Development Authority, pretty much every, you know, rental property in town falls under our area's, uh, threshold of affordable. Um, and most of the houses, well, a lot of the houses, you know, that are available to buy wood as well. Um, uh, so to a degree, our, our market sort of dictates that a lot of things built fall into that, um, that category. Uh, but certainly considering how we protect that in new construction coming in, where people are going to be looking to maximize the, the profit margins is important.
Well, I think that, um, I, I love the changes that were made to the text and the definitions. They seem to make sense. I'm definitely still going to need to sit with that cluster development, public, um, sewer and water and the density and the minimum lot size, but everything else we talked about and, and then coming, maybe having to come back to the accessory dwelling unit. But I think everything else we talked about and I read looks good.
For the next month, please, you know, feel free to take that home, digest it, ask any questions you need to Matt, Thomas, myself, or Mr. Smith. I'm sure I'll be more than happy to help out. Um, with that being said, uh, do we have any more comments, concerns, questions?
Sheri, did you have any other questions there?
I'm kind of wondering, uh, I'm from big cities primarily. I'm wondering how the definition of condo fits in with anything that's going on. I know it might seem a silly thing, but normally, you know, the condo comes into your place when you're converting a duplex or triplex or quad into privately owned spaces. And they transition from a single deed, I think, I don't remember who brought it up, a single deed property to a multiple property and become a condo, um, basically. So I'm wondering if there's any of that going to be going on in the city? Or we're just at this point trying to steer away from that and focus on getting, um.
Yeah, that.
Through the other.
I think that could be one that we could highlight there is, uh, you know, similar to patio homes and, and other stuff, things that, you know, um, we like the intent of, but we don't see any currently existing. And so then becomes a question of do we intend for this to be built in the future? Um, and if we're already setting up something that would allow, uh, those sort of segmented lots right off the bat, is there a need to do a, a condo structure? If that's the transition that gets you there from a rental to a, uh, you know, multiple deed, single structure? Yeah, we can do a little more research on that. I think that's definitely worth looking into. Is that language superfluous or is that something that needs to be fleshed out and better defined?
Anything else to come, come before us tonight? All right. Well, if there's nothing else, uh, we'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I will make the motion to adjourn. I'll second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 None opposed? Uh, thank you for joining us. Um, so I'll see you back March first. And we'll have two main topics. We'll re-review everything we discussed tonight. And we'll have our public hearing for the five oh one Bowery Street. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you all very much.
Stay safe.
Take care. Good night.